Could y'all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the March 20th, 2023 Board of Aldermen meeting. And I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't state that. It was exactly three years ago today that we had our last Alderman's meeting for a full year. So, uh, we have come a long ways since the pandemic, and I just thought I'd like to point that out, that it was March 20th of 2020 that we were here prior to this whole event. So, for those of you that don't know in regards to what am I doing here, basically after we have an election, um, I get to open the meeting, and the first order of business tonight will be for our newly-elected mayor, Dungeons, to come up and swear in all of our newly-elected Aldermen. Folks, if you would like, just come on up. We're gonna get y'all to stand on what would be the south end of the chambers for us, please. Just be careful when you come across, there are some cords, mic cords that are on the floor. Okay, y'all ready? Can you raise your right hand, please? Repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of Alderman
That I will faithfully execute the office of Alderman.
For the city of Rutland
For the city of Rutland.
To the best of my judgment and abilities. According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. We'll give the folks just a couple minutes to get back to their seats and get settled in, and then we'll move on. The, uh, next part of the procedure will be to go ahead and nominate a, uh, board president. So at this time, I'd like to open the nominations. Alderman Barbara Gallow.
It is my great honor to nominate Michael Talbot for president of the Board of Aldermen. Michael is extremely knowledgeable of city affairs, very organized, and therefore I submit his name.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second.
I'll move to close the nominations.
Uh, we have a motion to close the nominations. We have a second.
Second.
Alderman Gillum, thank you. So all those in favor of closing the nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Close opposed? Nominations are now closed. Now, all those in favor of Michael Talbot being your board president, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Michael Talbot, come on.
Alright, so I'd like to thank my fellow members for their support and confidence in me. I'll do my best to run these meetings effectively and efficiently, to promote productive discussion and debate, to preserve order and decorum, and to communicate openly and clearly with both the board and the public. Uh, for the new members, one of my primary roles is to recognize members who wish to speak. Uh, if you wish to speak, motion to me or raise your hand, and I'll nod to confirm, uh, that I understand, and I'll call on you when it's appropriate. So the first order of business is the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
I'll move. Second.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the minutes, and it has been seconded. Any discussion, questions, or debate? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters not on the agenda. So I'll ask members of the public to wait to be called on to speak, and when you're called on, to walk to the podium, to speak in front of the microphone. The microphone's not so that we can hear you, and so the folks watching on Peg TV can hear you. Um, and I ask that you state your name and your city or town of residence. So I think first person who has to speak outside the rail is Representative Knott.
Thank you. I'm Representative William Knott. I represent, uh, Rutland VII, which is located in the northwest quarter, give or take, of Rutland City. And I just wanna start by, and I told Alderman Kuply I had to be quick, but we'll see if I can hold that. I said two minutes, I might run over. So, um, I wanna start by just congratulating all of the newly-elected and returning Aldermen and women. Um, I have great fondness and memories from my time on this board. Uh, even on the most challenging, frustrating days, I always loved being a Rutland City Alderman. Uh, local government is just democracy at its purest, and so congratulations to all of you. I have no doubts that this board and this administration is gonna do good work. That said, I just wanted to touch on two themes, or two topics, and then make a request. Uh, the first is communication. Um, I know when I was a city Alderman, I was often, uh, a little frustrated on a lack of understanding of what was going on in the State House and Montpelier, and how Montpelier and Rutland could work better together to achieve goals for the city. So, the first thing I wanna do is just say, reach out to me. If you have questions, reach out to me. Uh, I'm sure that invitation extends to any other representative, but let's trade information. Let's make certain that I know what's going on, on the ground here, and that I can let you know what things are happening in Montpelier that could be to Rutland City's advantage. I have given your new board president my card. It's a little out of date, it still says Rutland 5-4. I'm not paying money for perfectly good, uh, business cards with one change. So, um, but it's got my contact information, phone, email. Please do not hesitate to reach out. Uh, let's have a ongoing thorough conversation so that I can help you be better Aldermen's, and you can help me be a better representative, and the people of Rutland City will benefit. And there are a lot of, uh, there are a lot of bills that people are concerned about. This legislature has a lot on its plate. Uh, we're, we're looking at housing. Everything is tied into housing. There are a number of housing bills working their way through the system. We're looking at childcare. We're looking at climate change. We're looking at paid family leave. Um, there, we're expanding the bottle bill. Uh, we're looking at shield laws, uh, to protect our, our healthcare providers. And with any topic, um, what's happening in committee can be distorted on, on social media, perhaps, uh, inaccurately reported in the news. So, when you have questions, uh, reach out. And if something sounds wrong to you, question it. And I was actually going to, uh, name a particular bill, um, that I've been hearing a lot of misinformation about, but actually decided against that, um, because I didn't want this speech to seem partisan. Um, I'll just say that every representative have, has bills we care about. Um, it's a very easy to misunderstand any bill, so let's talk. Um, the other thing I want to touch on is, uh, Rutland City, Rutland County. Um, again, don't just reach out to me. Uh, we have a fantastic delegation. We have a strong delegation in Montpelier who are looking out for Rutland County's best interests. And we meet once a week. We have two, uh, Aldermen's here who know all about this. We meet once a week as Rutland Caucus. Senators, representatives, doesn't matter party affiliation, and we talk about what needs to be done, uh, for, for Rutland County. And we work together. Are we gonna agree on every bill? No, of course not. But we are working together to better this county. And I try not to speak with notes, but I don't wanna leave anyone out. So, I would just like to say, Rutland County, not the most populated county in the state, as we know. We lost a representative this year because our population has shrunk, shrunk. And yet, in the Senate, Senator David Weeks is a vice chair of a committee. Senator Brian Callmore is a vice chair of a committee and the assistant minority leader in the Senate. On my side, in the House of Representatives, Representatives Tom Burdette, Butch Shaw, Stephanie Jerome, and Bill Canfield are all vice chairs of their committees. Patty McCoy from Pontley is the House Minority Leader, and, and I had the honor, uh, by being elected by my peers this year as an assistant majority leader in the House. Um, that is a fantastic amount of leadership for a county of this size. Rutland County continues to punch above our weight, and let's all work together to accomplish even more. And, uh, that's the end of my little speech, but I do have now a request, because, uh, of course I do. It's never just a one-way street. And, um, I, uh, have a lot of roles I play, and, uh, what I'm hoping to do this week is actually play delivery boy. Uh, as you all know, Rutland City passed the local options tax, and I reached out to our new mayor and, and discussed this previously, and what has been done is a letter has been drafted, uh, to the Speaker of the House, Jill Crowinsky, um, requesting that, um, Rutland's, uh, the passage of the local options tax be, um, sent to committee so that it can be discussed. All four Rutland, uh, Count, Rutland City representatives will be cosponsors of the bill to show the wide support it had down here. So, um, the mayor, working with the city clerk, has been kind enough to draft a letter, uh, requesting that this issue be sent to committee by the speaker, and that it be addressed in a timely manner. So, um, I know there's a copy floating around somewhere, and what I'm hoping is that, uh, you folks will be good enough to suspend the rules tonight and circulate it for signature, so that I can get my hands on it and deliver it personally to the speaker tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Knott. So I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll move. Second.
Alright. And I would entertain a motion to circulate the letter for signature.
We need to vote on suspending.
Right, we do.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion that's been seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so now I would entertain a motion to circulate the letter for signatures.
Second.
So we have a motion that's been seconded to circulate the letter for signatures. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So, I think Clerk Heck will pass that around.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just a comment before legislators leave us.
Yeah, sure.
Um, we talked about it at breakfast this morning, and I think the people need to know at home, when this new tax goes in, we gotta be sure 05701 means Rutland City, Rutland Town, or Mendon, because right now, a lot of people in the city are paying the Rutland Town tax if they're ordering something online. So I wanna make sure that it's very clear to the government ops committee that we gotta figure that out. Where, who gets what, and how we're gonna divide that.
And if I could just add, yes, I was talking with Alderman Gillum today, and I can remember, uh, when I was on this board, when Rutland Town adopted their, uh, 1% tax, and there were several Rutland City businesses that started to charge the tax erroneously. So, the issue of what's due to Rutland City, what's due to Rutland Town, and let's not accidentally send anything to Mendon, uh, will definitely be a topic of discussion. Thank you.
Alright, so I believe, uh, Chief Kilcullen is next.
Thank you. Um, so at our Police Commission meeting last week, we introduced a couple new employees, or employees in new positions with, with the department. And so tonight, I wanna introduce you to Kyle Dawson. Kyle, uh, was a dispatcher with us for about 10 months, having come from the state police, uh, with, had spent a number of years there dispatching for them. And as you all know, um, likely know, we created a new position in the current fiscal year's budget for Community Resource Specialist. And as you know, we've had, uh, and, and not unique to Rutland, but we've had difficulty, um, hiring, uh, sworn police officers, and the training, uh, you know, it takes about, uh, the, the process to hire is lengthy. Once someone is hired, it's about a year before that employee is sort of a full-service police officer. And so we looked at our data and said, you know what? 25% of the calls that were response who are not criminal in nature. So do we really need a police response to those calls? I think we need, the city needs to provide a response, but it doesn't need to be a police response. So we created the Community Resource Specialist. And the first one to fill that position was Matt Proudy, having coming out of retirement, having been deployed with the National Guard. Um, saw him walking down the street one night and had a conversation, and said, hey, interested in a job like that? And so, so Matt really hit the ground running, um, last August, with, again, some separations from the department. It created an opportunity for, um, uh, he, he created an opening when he, when he was, came back as a sworn officer, and Kyle stepped in, and again, Kyle too has hit the ground running. So, uh, it's been a great fit for the department. Um, as you may know, in the, uh, in the, uh, next fiscal year, we've got, um, uh, we, the board supported a second Community Resource Specialist position, and so we're looking for, we advertised that recently, and, uh, we'll start to interview for those jobs too. Um, this type of position, uh, you know, again, I think it's fairly new, um, really across the country. Uh, Bradlboro reached out, wanted to come up and sort of take a look at what we're doing, potentially do a ride-along with, with Kyle. Um, LAPD has an article in the paper about two weeks ago, looking to do the exact same thing. Um, so it's nice that LAPD's watching Rutland. But anyway, um, just wanted to introduce you to Kyle. And as we get new employees, the mayor, I think, wants, you know, uh, would like, you know, the, the, the board and the entire city to really know who, who they're, um, who we're work, you know, who's working for them. Um, so with that, Kyle, floor's yours. Any questions? Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Chief, thank you. Alright, do we have any members of the public or others who wish to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Alright, seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Sorry, communications from the mayor.
Hi, everyone. So as this is my first time doing this, uh, first of all, let me say congrats to the newly-elected and the re-elected Alderman. Nice job. Um, I also wanna say, uh, thanks to our previous mayor, my predecessor, Dave Olair. Um, Dave set us up for success. You know, we're, we've got a good foundation to work and build on, and I think that moving ahead, you know, we're building on the success of a previous mayor who did a great job for our city, so I just wanted to say thanks to Dave. Uh, so hopefully, as I go through these in the future, what you'll hear is three things. Uh, what we have done in the past week or two, uh, between meetings, what, uh, we're actively doing, and then what we're going to do next. So I'm gonna run through that tonight, and then when I'm done, feel free to ask questions. So, in the past four days, uh, I've met with the RP, uh, Rutland Regional Planning Commission to talk about what's in process there for our city that they've been working on. It was a great list and a good meeting, and what we found was there's a lot of work that they're doing that, um, over time, the city should actually be leading, and there's a lot of work that they can do for us that they, they wanna shift into doing. So, over the next few weeks, you'll see us continue to, to shift some things around with them. Um, I moved my office downstairs, and so far, the reception's been great. People have been walking in and saying hi. I've had some great conversations, so that's been great. Um, I've had the ability to meet with every department head in the city, talk about my vision and what's next for Rutland, for Rutland City as a whole. Um, I had a great conversation with an owner of some movie theaters. Um, they are looking, I had that conversation this evening, actually, luckily. Um, and they're looking at Rutland as a potential option for their business expansion. They think that, you know, if we can have a conversation with Brixmore, the owner of the Plaza, and find a, a deal that works, we may have a movie theater in. His, uh, enthusiasm was such that he said even maybe before the summer blockbusters come out. So that would be fantastic. No promises yet, but we're working on it. Um, we submitted the 1% option tax. Uh, uh, thank you to Clerk Heck for getting that up to Montpelier as quickly as possible. That urgency that you heard, um, Representative Knott talk about tonight is really important. If that doesn't get processed in this session, we have to wait till the next one, and that can take some time. So we wanted to make sure that got done. Um, we had a TIF working group meeting, and what came out of that was some action items for me, to meet with landowners and start to have a conversation about how we can get some control over those pieces of land to really move forward, or work with other organizations that need control over land to get them the access that they need. And then the last thing today, we had a legislative breakfast at Dismas House. They did a fantastic job putting that on. I learned a lot about what's going on in our community, how people leverage these fantastic resources for recovery. Right? So we see, we talk about all the challenges that we have in Rutland all the time. The recovery piece is really interesting, because there's a lot of success, right? I mean, I'm seeing nods from the others that were there today. There's a lot of success coming out of Dismas House. So as, you know, we look towards how do we help, um, the people in our city that need that, you know, Dismas House can be a guide and an advisor. So what are we actively doing? Um, this week, I've been evaluating city services, and we're gonna continue to do that. That's things like our cell phone contract, our internet contracts, other service contracts that we have that maybe haven't been addressed for efficiencies yet, and we're putting some money, or some work into that to find money that we can save the taxpayers, right? So we can reallocate those funds this year, and then figure out what to do in the future with the, those savings. Um, doing the same thing with a budget review. I've got a couple of positions that I'd like to create here in short order. We need to do that with the money that we've been given, not just for the next three months, but for the next 15 months. So, uh, that's, that's a challenge, so I'm working on that right now. Um, started work on a digitization strategy. So, Andrew Sternisty, who is our zoning administrator, started the work with GovPilot. We got a couple of modules up and running, but we need to expand that and make the city more accessible, accessible from a digital standpoint. So that, uh, we started on that process this week, and that'll hopefully ease the interaction with the city. People will be able to apply, uh, at some point for licenses and, and things like that online. Um, also, uh, for the Aldermen who got a little slip on their tables tonight, we're, I started the process of upgrading the wireless in City Hall. Uh, I figured we could use a little bit of that technology skillset. So hopefully internet connection here is fast. We're gonna test it out with you first, and then move it to the rest of City Hall as we go. So what are we doing next, right? So what am I gonna do over the next few weeks, as well as those things I just discussed? Um, we're meeting, uh, with Barbara at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. So there's two things that Barbara and I are gonna talk about next week, or actually later this week, I think. Um, energy efficiency grants, there's two of them. One is the Municipal Energy Resilience Program, and then the second one is the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. So both of these grant, ones, both of these grants, one's about $76,000, the other one's about $250,000, will allow us to do things like upgrade our buildings, do more insulation. We've used things like this in the past. This whole attic above you is fully insulated, and it's really made this building slightly more efficient. As you can tell, the heat stays in, right? And so, so we have a lot of, we have a lot of things that we can do with those grants, so we're gonna look at that this week. Um, starting on the new draft of the RRA contract, so I got together at the RRA meeting on Tuesday. Uh, the Rutland Redevelopment Authority is actually go, undergoing a strategic, um, uh, planning session, and they're trying to figure out what their future looks like. And one of the things that we can do from the city is refine that, that, um, that contract and help them out. So Barbara and I had that conversation. We're gonna circle back later on this week after I kinda get part of my first draft going. Um, I have a meeting planned with Mary Ashcroft from Rutland Town. She's the new chair of their board, so we're gonna meet for coffee next week. Um, I'm connecting with Ian Sullivan. Hopefully by the end of this week, I just have to call him again. And then, uh, transitional, uh, housing conversations. Um, the May-June hotel meeting, this is something that someone walked into my office today. I'm not gonna mention who, because I told them I'd totally got things rolling. Um, uh, someone walked into my office today and said, hey, the same problems that we're having here with housing and hotels in Rutland, they're having all throughout the state. We'd like to have a statewide conversation with stakeholders to try to work on a transition process, because the money's gonna end in May and June. So what's that transition process look like? So we're gonna schedule that for about two weeks out from now, and have those conversations. So hopefully by the next board meeting, I'll have something for you. But if not, I'll, I'll give you an update either way. Um, but we have to work with other cities in the state, and we should have a cohesive team of work together. We may find some individual components in Rutland that we can do, but I think if we all work as a group, we'll make it, uh, a little bit further than if we work alone. Um, Barbara is gonna talk about the Autism Advocacy Group and the art show that they wanna do, and how City Hall's gonna participate in that. And then the last thing, uh, that is on my list for today is I'm going back to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, uh, next week, and we're gonna start to talk about that city master plan, and what we need to do as a city to get the ball rolling in that direction. So, that's the fast and quick update. Uh, is there any questions? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, now we'll move to additions and deletions to the agenda. So I think the only thing we have is to move the executive session to the end of the meeting, and...
I'll move. Second.
Alright, so we have a, a motion, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up is a request from Barbara Spalding of the Rutland Redevelopment Authority regarding a Center for Rural Innovation Placemaking Grant Award for Rutland.
Good evening. So first, I'd just wanna say on behalf of the RRA, I wanna congratulate all of the new Aldermen and returning Aldermen and the new mayor. And the RRA will be reaching out to invite you to an event so we can get to know each other better, and we look forward to working with you. So the Center on Rural Innovation received a grant from USDA Rural Vermont to create a placemaking plan for Rutland City, and, um, they have hired Lisa Glover as the placemaking fellow at Quarry to lead the project with input from city stakeholders, including the RRA, the DRP, and Cedar. And the final plan is expected to be presented around December of this year. So at this point, we, or have already, the grant has already been received, but we are looking for a vote of confidence to proceed from this board, uh, and then ask for your participation.
Move to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight. Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Moves to proceed to the confidence?
Vote of confidence.
Vote of confidence. Second, I shall move.
So we have a motion for a vote of confidence to proceed with the placemaking plan and pledge participation by the members of the board as stakeholders. And we, that's been seconded? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. So, um, next on the agenda is kind of a reverse grant. Um, it's the Robert Wood Johnson Culture of Health Prize, and no one, um, in the state of Vermont has ever received this prize before. We could be the first community to do so. And what this prize does is honors the work of communities that foster health and well-being for all by addressing systemic inequities. And I thought it was, um, relevant, because you had signed a Declaration of Inclusion, um, back in May of '21, and the prize would be $250,000, and we would be applying in, uh, collaboration with different, several entities. Monica Ganguly-Kiefnir from the Vermont Department of Health, Sam Davis Boyd, who is an assistant professor at Castleton University, Arwin Turner, Executive Director of Come Alive Outside, and Carrie Becker of Becker Associates. And myself will be putting this, um, application together, but it does have to be from the municipality. So there's no required resolution, but we are asking the board to allow us to pursue this application and hopefully receive this prize.
Can I ask a question? Is there any match required with it?
There is no match.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I'll move to support the request.
Alright, so we have a motion.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to support, uh, the application for the Robert Wood Johnson Culture of Health Prize. Anything additional that needs to be in that motion, Barbara, or is that sufficient?
That would be sufficient.
And it's been seconded. Uh, any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I think you have one more item?
I do. So this is, um, just for information. Um, so I think you remember we, we, the city gave Autism Advocacy and Intervention a buy-up grant not too long ago. So they reached out to me and asked if they could hang artwork that their students have done here at City Hall in honor of Autism Month, which is in April. And I asked the mayor, and he, uh, said that we could do that, and he would even take a piece of art for his office. So, uh, looking forward to that, and I just wanted you to all know that and to be looking for the art when you come and visit City Hall.
May I ask a question? Barbara? Um, I could just have a question in regards to this artwork. Are any of the artists themselves autistic or otherwise neurodivergent?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
So I'll move to receive and place on file.
Alright. We have a motion to receive and place on file, and it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Alright, so next, uh, we'll hear a request from Recreation Superintendent Peters in regard to awarding of RFP for Recreation Software and Signature of Contract.
Okay. Um, so, welcome, and I'd also like to thank Mayor Dungeons for taking the time last week to have that conversation. Probably was supposed to be 30 minutes, but, um, about two hours later, we're like, we should probably end this. Um, and thanks, I've, I've reached out to all the new Aldermen, uh, for a meet and greet at the REC Center. So definitely come and do that, get you caught up on the projects, because, um, as Michael said, and as everyone knows, we are just rolling. The REC Department specifically too. Um, so please, um, I know I, I'm meeting with Cheryl tomorrow and John later this week, so thank you for that. Um, and I just wanted to again thank the, uh, board, the past board, for all of their support for the REC. Where we're at now could not have happened with that, um, support. And, uh, a quick update on the VAC lessons that the REC will be doing. And a quick update on the VAC lessons that the REC will be doing. We, as I stated before, we had offered about 10 lessons, which was serving about 80 kids that filled up in 45 minutes. We are now serving about 175 kids that will start on Sunday, and we plan on continuing that. So we're really excited about that, and just a quick update on that. Okay, so what I'm here for is a request to award our RFP to Civic Plus. Currently, the system we use is on a server base, and when the evaluation was done about six months ago, and thanks to Andrew for leading that, we knew, we've known that our server has been on its last leg for probably five years. So what's been happening in the last six months to a year is almost every Monday, it goes out, we have to reset it, and we are holding our breath that it will reset. This is how we take all of our registrations for programs. The cost of the server was anywhere between $10,000 and $20,000, so instead of replacing, we just went ahead and went for the RFP, which was something we were going to have to do eventually anyway. So our goal is to sign the contract this week. We had six RFPs come in. Not only was this the lowest, but it was also the one that we chose. We had three of the six were demoed that we had done for the last four months. Endless conversation, endless demos. And we had three other ones we weren't aware of, but the price was way high. So not only did Civic Plus come in lower, but it also was our top choice. So with that being said, the cost for startup for this year, which can be paid in two installments, is $17,562, and the approval from the ARPA funds for IT improvement is where we would be looking for those funds. So request, I guess, to suspend the rules.
All right. I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion passes. And I would entertain a motion to award the RFP to Civic Plus.
Correct.
Do we need anything additional about entering into a contract?
I think you may want to say yes, subject to the attorney's review, because I haven't seen it yet, right, Kim?
Yeah, it's a one-page quote is what it is, because it has the software. So I have that with me tonight.
So moved.
Award the RFP to Civic Plus, pending attorney review.
If I may amend, just that the money to come from funds formerly known as ARPA from the IT improvements.
I agree with that. Just make it all one amendment, a one motion.
All right. So one amendment. Agreed to by the seconders. So we have a motion to award the RFP to Civic Plus, pending approval of the city attorney, and that the funds would come from the ARPA funds allocated for IT improvement? Right. Close enough. All right. That's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Alderman McCann.
I had a question.
Oh.
So I haven't seen much of the -- so is this, just somebody else is going to bring a new server and install it, or is this changing?
It's cloud. Sorry, it's cloud-based.
Okay, so it's going to be a cloud-based thing.
Sorry. That's a huge piece of this. Correct. It is cloud-based, and so, in fact, the company we're with right now, we would have to go cloud-based, and the price of that was about $25,000. So that was another reason why we went with this lower option.
Perfect. Thank you.
Joining the rest of the world.
Any additional questions? Discussion? All right. We have a motion. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Treasurer Markowski with an ARPA resolution on spending on government salaries for additional funds received.
My apologies. This request that I have is unusual. I wanted to get it in now because we are coming up to some reporting requirements on the ARPA funds that we received. So I'd like the board to suspend the rules tonight to take up the motions that I recommended, and I'll explain now what we have. The city received the $4.5 million ARPA award. And then, so we've gone through the steps. We took the special election, the one-time special election. We said we're going to spend it on government services. And then, two weeks after the meeting when we did that, we received another small amount of $1,062.33. So because it's part of that larger award, we need to go through that same process of accepting that award, taking that special election, then a resolution to use those funds toward government services, and then the board, after doing that, then we assigned those funds in the general fund. I'm sorry that I'm talking fast, and it's a little bit confusing. It was quite a process to get here and then to have to do it with $1,000, but I think that we should, so we can report it all at the end of March. The report is due end of April. So I would ask the board to -- I sent a memorandum of my request. I had three requests, so consider those requests that I had. Do you want me to read them all, or?
I have the language here. I can read it.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? All right. And I would entertain a motion to elect the standard allowance approach for the city award to include the additional funds received of $1,062.33 to spend on the provision for government services throughout the period of performance of the grant.
So moved.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate of the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the allocation of ARPA funding to include the additional funds received of $1,062.33 to fund government services under the Replacing Lost Sector Revenue spending category, to include general fund salaries, overtime, and benefits, and authorize the BOA chair to sign the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All right. So the motion has been moved and seconded. Alderman McCann.
Just for clarification of process, as a new Alderman, we have suspended the rules to make the decision on the first one. Do we not need to do that for each additional one?
I believe we do not need to.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So motion, it's been seconded. Any additional discussion or debate or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion passes. And third, I would entertain a motion to assign the general fund unrestricted fund balance of $1,062.33 to be used to fund the quote-unquote "ARPA" special projects and expenses that are approved by the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or debate on that motion?
Just a question to keep my promise here, to tell the people at home what the hell we're doing here. These are a requirement by the clerk's office to move things in the right category for auditing purposes. Am I correct?
For the treasurer's office.
For the treasurer's office. So they know what we're doing. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So if I may.
Alderman Dennis?
To answer John's question, because they're all related to the same topic, so that's why we only had to suspend the rules once.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you, Treasurer Markowski. Anything additional? You have a report?
And then I had one other item on the agenda. The financial reports from February that I am actually going to ask you to receive and file. I did some summary data, but I'd really like to spend time with you on the quarter-end reports. That March quarter-end is going to be really important for the city in terms -- you know, we've been accustomed the last few years to having some significant surplus to put toward the tax rate, so it's time to start looking, especially at a quarter-end. What does it look like? What is it going to look like in June? I think we can start projecting that in March. The quarterly reports are much larger than the monthly. You'll always have a report from the treasurer's office with the financial information, and if you ever have questions, I'm generally in my office or right now in payroll, but always available to answer questions. But it's a lot of information, and I'm hoping we can sit down in finance committee and really go through those March financials in more detail. So I don't know if anyone has specific questions tonight on the financials. I tried to attach a summary to the report to the board, and we posted the quarterly financials on the website for the public, so.
Any questions from the board? So I'd entertain a motion to receive and file?
Second. Oh, I'm still moved.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Question, Mr. President?
Yes, Alderman Gillum.
There's a resolution in here that needs to be signed by you. Do we need to move that resolution, or we already did that?
That was part of the ARPA, the middle one, the second one.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Your packet also includes minutes from recent RRA board meetings, minutes from recent planning commission meetings, and updates from the downtown partnership, so I'd encourage the new board members to review those if you haven't done so already. So next, we have reports of standing committees, which we have none, reports of representatives, which we have none.
Mr. President?
Alderman Gillum.
If I may, for the new members, so they understand what's happening and where all the reports are, for all the organizations that we belong to, like the Marble Valley Transit, which I'm a member now, I don't know if I'm going to be in the future, and also the Solid Waste District, those are online, so if you want to ever get those minutes, they're there. You go to the appropriate organization, and their minutes are sitting in there. That just saves the clerk a lot of work, so we put them online. So if anyone wants the minutes, that's where they are.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman Gillum. So next is report.
Mr. President?
I did have a question as well, Mr. President. Piggybacking off what Alderman Gillum has said, so those minutes are available online. Will it continue to be a trend that those minutes are included in Alderman packets when needed and relevant?
If the Aldermen wish it to be so, then yes, I think we can do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. All right. Next, reports of select committees, which we have none tonight, then petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications, we have none. And next, Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. And that would bring us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before this board? Seeing and hearing none, we have miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman, Barbara Gallo.
Mr. President, I assume you'll be sending out a notice to everyone as to what committees we're being assigned to?
Yes. I blocked out my morning, tomorrow morning, and I'm going to start emailing board members by seniority with what I propose to be committee assignments and send your feedback. Any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business? Seeing and hearing none, I'll ask -- Clerk Heck? I'll ask Attorney Blumer to read the necessary motions for us to move into executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's a two-part, actually not a two-part motion, it's two motions. The first motion is to find that premature general public knowledge regarding probable litigation, to which the city would be a party, would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage, because the discussion will divulge the city's strategy in such probable litigation, and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the